Hello, Kako. Mahalo for joining us today. We will begin with the Ipoli by Commissioner Walter Konea Kua.
Hello, Kako. Mahalo for joining us today. We will begin with the Ipoli by Commissioner Walter Konea Kua. Ipoli, Kako. Our dear heavenly father, we thank you for the morning. We thank you for the clear skies, the rain that refreshes our land. We thank you for the people that have come, those that we represent, those that have been here before. We thank you for Prince Guhiu, who laid the groundwork for so much of those things that we wish for our people. Bless these proceedings. Watch over all of us who are still in root. And when we're done with our work here, we ask that you would take us safely home. Be with us with your spirit. Help us to move forward with that work that you would have us do. These things we ask in your name and give you thanks. Amen.
Amen. Hey, the meeting of the Hawaiian Homes Commission is called to order. The meeting is being held virtually on Zoom and in person at Halepoulii ninety one dash fifty four twenty Kapolei Parkway, Kapolei oh well, nine six seven zero seven. Colley Watson, Chairman of the Commission, and today's date is Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five, and the time is nine forty three. Leah, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Freitas.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalakini.
Aye.
Commissioner Konea Kua.
Aye.
Commissioner Lasua.
Aye.
Commissioner Namu'oh.
Aye.
Commissioner Nellis.
Aye.
And Chair Watson.
Here.
Seven members present. We have a quorum. Oh, noting for the record, the excuse of Commissioners Kalepa and Marfil.
Okay, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Item F nine will be addressed first. When we get to the F items, item F six will be moved to the end of the section. It will be preceded by item G three. The Commission will convene in an executive session at lunch at noon. There is no community meeting this month. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Hey, are there any edits or comments for the October twenty and twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minute?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Hey, let's see, public testimony on the agendas, items, Kena, Summer Gibson.
There's there's three items coming to you. Aloha, Chair and Commissioners. As you know, I've been here for almost two years, asking that residents be given information about their relocation plan for Waipoli. A week ago, and I do apologize not to get this too sooner, but literally a week ago, a resident said, hey, I was doing an online search and I came across this relocation plan from Four Hawaiian Homelands, published October fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Why has no one told me about this plan? And I said, that's a very good question. Why is there a plan from Interwest Group on behalf of Department of Hawaiian Homelands, published October fifteenth, but not provided to a single resident of Waipoli portyards? And that was very upsetting. Because they've been being told, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of you. We're gonna have a plan for you. Don't worry, we have this taken care of. And yet, no one was told about this. They read the plan and immediately they went to the back of it where it said, it's a sixty five page plan. I just wanted to, I just printed out to you some of the pages, not the whole sixty five. On the very last part of what I printed, this is the very last page of the plan. Page sixty two says, next steps in the relocation process. The relocation team will initiate individual interviews and update household data, including the number of children on site once a confirmed or estimated closing date is established. The closing date was two weeks after this was published. And that was not a mystery. I believe Hawaiian Homelands had been working towards that date for months. So this is very confusing. And then when they read the plan, there's a whole list of units in the plan. When they looked at that list of units, as anyone would who's wondering where they're gonna move to, none of them are available except for two. And I can forge you the whole plan. It's just sixty five pages. I didn't print them all out, but only two of the units in the plan are available and they're both in Keikaha. Imagine you've been told for two years now, you're gonna have to relocate. And you're given no information. And then you find out by happenstance that there's this thing on the internet. So there is a petition. They signed this petition just in the last week because they're, they're asking for basic things. They're asking for, you know, when will we be given a relocation plan which meets requirements? What is the order of move out? The timeline of move out? How is our rental assistance gonna be calculated? We would like to receive fair, equitable, and timely communication regarding our plan. If we have to move because of construction, as we've been told, can we move into another unit while we're waiting for things to get sorted out? These are all very fair, reasonable questions. And I just would implore the Commission and the Department to somehow communicate with these hundreds of residents that have been kept in the dark and don't know what's going on. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify. I believe some of them are also online to testify about this because it is concerning. Thank you.
Okay, next, let's get to the agenda. Okay, the consent agenda, Juan Garcia.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator.
That's all the time you have.
That's all. So before you Commissioners, Homestead Services Division has eight items for your approval under the consent agenda items.
Are there any questions? Not, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item on the agenda, C one, approval of the twenty twenty six Commission meeting schedule.
Yep. Okay, aloha, Commissioners. Before you is the proposed twenty twenty six Hawaiian Homes Commission meeting schedule. As a reminder, in accordance with past practice and Commission expectations, the Commission meets on Thursday, the third Monday and Tuesday of each month throughout the calendar. DHHL community meetings remain an integral part of our beneficiary outreach and are scheduled on the Monday evenings between the business meetings. You'll see that the proposed schedule aligns with that historical structure for consistency and predictability and while also balancing meeting planning and travel logistics and the department's anticipated workloads. Important to note that in even numbered years, which next year is, we normally traditionally go to Hana. But for twenty twenty six, the department anticipates several possible work-driven engagements in Hana specifically related to the administrative rule change hearings and or lease award related events. So rather than planning a standalone trip, the proposal is that the Commission piggyback on one of those departmental visits, allowing us to maximize Commissioner availability, reduce additional travel, and minimize expenses. So once DHHL confirms the exact Hana-related hearing or award date, the Commission can formally align a corresponding meeting date and finalize that. So we can amend the agenda at that time. Other than that, if anybody has questions or edits for the schedule?
Not, okay, Chair, entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty six Commission meeting schedule. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Hey, the next item on the agenda, E one, approval of lease awards, Honokawai subdivision agricultural project lease, Lahaina Maui. Kalani Franda and Michelle Hitzman.
Good morning, Chair Watson.
Morning.
Commissioners. We have several items on the agenda for decision as it's related to project lease awards. And I will now turn it over to Michelle Hitzman, our housing projects branch manager.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Again, Michelle Hitzman, Housing Project Branch Manager. This is item E one, approval of lease awards for the Honokawai subdivision agricultural project lease. Recommended motion is approve the awards of the Department of Hawaiian Homeland's lot leases to the eleven applicants listed below for ninety nine years. Thank you.
Is there motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next item.
Item is E two, approval of lease award, Pilari Ma Keikai subdivision phase two residential vacant lots. Recommended motion, approve the awards of Department of Hawaiian Homeland's lot leases to the applicant listed below for ninety nine years. Thank you.
Okay, is there motion?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item.
Next item is item E three, approval of lease award for the Kaum Mana subdivision residential vacant lot. Recommended motion, approve the awards of the Department of Hawaiian Homeland's lot leases to the applicant listed below for ninety nine years. Thank you.
The motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item E four, approval of lease award for the Lanae subdivision residential project lease. Recommended motion, approve the awards of the Department of Hawaiian Homeland's lot leases to the thirty seven applicants listed below for ninety nine years. Thank you.
Is there motion?
So moved. Second.
Let me just say on that one, I guess we got thirty seven in going through the process of identifying and going through the orientation and actually having people show up and make a choice. We are trying to hustle and get more because we're gonna actually do about seventy five lots. So there is, you know, some activity on the part of some of the existing or anticipated recipients where their kids might be able to become part of the process and also receive awards. I'm talking about the adult kids. So on that one, you know, we are looking for more participants. Obviously, it's a little challenging on that island. And that's one of the reasons why we are working with the county developer that's developing adjacent. So collectively, we'll have a larger project, you know, kind of shared amenities and kind of the better approach if you want to get the cost down. So that is one that hopefully evolve, but the desire is to eliminate that waitlist or at least one island which might be able to get there. There are, you know, those that are not responding, which is kind of typical for a lot of our waitlisting lists. So hopefully that will turn around. Anyway, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Next item.
Item E five, approval of lease award, Puohona subdivision residential turnkey. Recommended motion, approve the awards of the Department of Hawaiian Homeland lot leases to the two applicants listed below for ninety nine years, subject to the purchase of the existing improvements on the lot by way of a loan or cash. Thank you.
Okay, is there motion? Kalani, you wanna kind of give an update on what's our anticipated next move on this one?
For Puohona?
Yeah.
Puohona. So Puohona, we actually awarded all of the items. As far as progress is concerned, they, we're, I believe it's about every week they're releasing two more houses as far as having it constructed, ready for occupancy. So there's a very active movement on moving forward with the phase one awards that we had and then moving into phase two. We should be completed by, I believe it's next year September.
Yeah, there's a total of about a hundred sixty one awardees and, you know, that was one of the first, what is the first project? Well, we use our Act two seventy nine to six hundred million. We're also working with a developer that is, has a really good track record that I worked with over twenty years ago. The first phase of Waiau Co. And so he, you know, provides a kind of a innovative approach on acquiring new lands that are independent of our existing inventory, which has been a real blessing in the sense that as we all know, when this program was first created and a hundred, over a hundred years ago, we were kind of given very marginal, in some cases, very bad lands. So this is kind of a change. This is something that we see the results of not only an innovative and creative developer, but more importantly, we're starting to award homesteads in areas that are new and in really fantastic locations. So we're gonna continue this approach. And we are doing it in with six hundred million, we're doing about twenty eight projects. So it's exciting time for the program.
Chair, if I may add, this is one of the projects where we had utilized affordable housing credits, monetized that to be able to use that towards our acquisition versus usually using actual monies. And so that was very beneficial for us to take a look at properties that were ready with infrastructure around there as Chair had mentioned. One of the things that we had mentioned in the latest informational meeting for Maui Residential was that this third phase that's coming up, there's been a restructuring of that. It was anticipated for Habitat for Humanity or self-help housing. We're actually moving that towards rent with option to purchase Lytec project. Because of the assessments they were getting for those that were qualif-, pre-qualifying for phase one and phase two, it made sense to move forward to be able to accommodate those, the needs of those people that are pre-qualifying. And it really fit well with the program of the Lytec funding, rent with option to purchase. And developer has been pretty successful. They actually had won a award, Lytec award, last year on the last go-round for another project. So they're very equipped for moving forward and programming this next twenty-four in that way.
Yeah, just, let me also add, this particular develop-, developer Everett Dowling is involved in three other projects. And we just had awards where we awarded how many? Four hundred?
Oh, four thirty. Four hundred and thirty.
Four hundred and thirty of the total of the eleven hundred we're gonna be doing. So on the island of Maui, we're very, very active. And it's really exciting, especially the new areas that we're getting great locations. Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Mahalo, Michelle.
Okay, E-six.
So we have item E-six that's on the agenda and submitting this for approval. Our recommendation is that the Commission would approve the amendment to fiscal year twenty-six land development division budget to reflect the following corrections, the Act two seventy-nine funding allocations. The reason for this is back in February twenty-four, there was a restructuring of some of the projects. And some, and the approval for those restructuring was done back in February twenty-four. These items that are in here, some of these were more sub-, I want to say, projects that were being looked at but not approved by the Commission. So we are seeking the approval of the Commission to amend this. The reason for the submitter, there was erroneous budget entries, as noted in your submitter. They're incorrectly inputted. It doesn't impact any of the twenty-eight projects under Act two seventy-nine. And it's also confirmation that we've already had encumbered Waiau Maoka, the acquisition and development. So that funding is secured. And also just wanted to correct the Hana Pepe residential lots that we had appropriated actually seven, seventeen point eight million versus the sixty-three. And with that, this amendment will correct the, let me just make sure, will correct the numerical inaccuracies. The review of, as we went through and we're taking a look at our budget, moving forward, doing some reconciliations, this was brought up. And we just wanted to make sure, because the numbers are so large, we wanted to make sure that it came in front of the Commission, that you would acknowledge it and also approve the amendment. So once again, our recommendation is that, respectfully recommend that the Commission approve the correction to fiscal year twenty-six land development division budget as outlined, ensuring accurate reflection of Act two seventy-nine fund allocations. Mahalo.
Okay, can we get a motion before any questions? So moved. Is there a second? Okay, discussion.
Chair.
Commissioner Ornellis.
Number four.
Yes.
In regards to the Hana Pepe residential lots. I'm just trying to understand, that's such a huge difference. So are we saying that the initial entry was an error?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
And it's also the seventeen point eight as well was approved in the Act two seventy-nine budget and also approval initially, as well as back when the permitted interaction group had come before to make some of the adjustments. That number was seventeen point eight.
Okay, so it's just purely an entry.
Correct.
Okay. Mahalo.
Okay, we do have some, any other questions from the Commissioners? If not, we do have a couple of public testifiers, Blossom Fitera and Kainoa McDonald. Okay, there now, okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colinie. Okay, F-nine, approval of the termination of license number three-seven-two, Wymana Enterprises Inc., statewide, Kahana and Linda.
Aloha and good morning, Commissioners. Kahana Albino with the Land Management Division, Income Properties Manager. This morning, we have agenda item number F-nine. Thank you for reordering the agenda items so that we can get through this. LMD is seeking the approval to terminate license number, agreement number three-seven-two to Wymana Enterprises Incorporated and its assignees. With me today, I have Andrew Sante, land agent, who wrote up the submitter and is gonna be here to justify the recommendation as submitted.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commission. For the record, Andrew Sante, land agent under the Land Management Division. To support for any questions, we also have attorney Rachel Moriama and hopefully attorney Kevin Herring, Zoom. Also have our tower consultant Eric Schatz and our broadband coordinator, Jaren Tengen, the crowd. But I'd also like to thank all for helping me prepare our plan moving forward, should you folks choose to continue to submit. So the recommended motion today would be to approve to terminate license three-seventy-two as to Wymana Enterprises and its assignees under section nineteen, based on the breaches described herein. Approve the LMD broadband continuity plan for site access, security, emergency maintenance, and interim administration. And approve on a conditional basis the issuance of carrier-site-specific interim license agreements to ensure maintain uninterrupted service and orderly operations as is subject to Commission's future approval. Authorize the necessary record corrections and updates for any directives under the FAA and FCC. And finally, to authorize Chair to sign and issue a notice of termination, a letter to immediately commence the implementation of this plan. So a little background for license three-seventy-two. It actually spans a couple of decades, so I tried to condense this a little bit. It was issued in nineteen ninety-five to Wymana Enterprises to provide telecommunications on Hawaiian homelands with later partial assignments to Sandwich Isles Communications for wireline operations and Palma County for wireless. From the mid-two thousand and ten's forward, the licensee and affiliates entered extended non-performance and regulatory trouble, resulting in persistent non-compliance with core license obligations for roughly a decade. In two thousand and twenty-four, the licensee publicly announced a discontinuance of service to homestead customers, which prompted federal and state orders addressing unauthorized discontinuance, consumer protections, and transition obligations. Now, on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the department issued a notice of breach to Wymana and its assignees. In addition to the chronology above, the notice identifies the following grounds. First, a failure to pay license fees owed to DHHL with penalties exceeding nine hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars as of November two thousand and twenty-five. Two, refusal by Wymana and its assignees to cooperate with the Hawaii PUC and its investigative docket assessing fitness, willingness, and ability to continue regulated service on DHHL lands. Three, violation of federal law by failing to obtain prior approval for discontinuance of service as determined by the FCC in its June third, two thousand and twenty-four letter. Four, violations of the Hawaii administrative rules, section six eighty-one, one twenty-three, and six eighty-one twenty-nine as determined by the PUC July twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four decision and order. Five, failure to maintain and safely operate telecommunications infrastructure and to comply with applicable maintenance, public safety, and access obligations. And finally, service failures and abandonment indicators, including asset auction activity and discontinuance of service. So this notice was hand-delivered on August nineteenth, accepted by Certified Mail on September second, two thousand and twenty-five, and provided a sixty-day cure period that expired on November first. The sites under this license remain live, and they are still in active service to surrounding communities, including two facilities carrying first net public safety traffic. These carriers continue operating under existing communication site agreements, but the rents and fees have been remitted to Wymana and its affiliates without required payments to DHHL. Our consultant has flagged significant corrosion at the Ke'aukaha self-support tower, requiring structural mapping and remediation, and other locations warrant due diligence inspections to confirm condition and prioritize maintenance. So upon Commission approval and the Chair's issuance of the termination letter, we propose that DHHL will terminate license three-seventy-two as to Wymana and its assignees under section nineteen and take immediate possession and control of the premises. As defined in section twenty-three, the premises is, we would secure the sites, protect public safety, conduct inventory, and oversee inspections. The termination would also identify uncurried breaches, confirm cancellation under section nineteen, and provide a reasonable scheduled opportunity for the licensee, in this case Wymana and its assignees, to remove property in accordance with sections nineteen and seventeen. We will request that within fourteen calendar days of the termination notice, the licensee will be required to submit an access request form designating a single point of contact, insurance, equipment list, and site identifiers. Within seven calendar days of receiving a complete request, DHHL will issue a reasonable island-by-island block schedule for escorted access. These access will be supervised, limited to approved work areas, and coordinated so as not to interfere with active carrier operations. Failure to timely submit the form, coordinate with our schedule, or remove property within DHHL's window of time after written notice will authorize DHHL to retain property or to remove the property at licensee's cost, consistent with the license. To maintain service continuity, DHHL would serve as licenser and administrator on an interim basis and execute short-term carrier-site-specific license agreements that preserve current business terms until long-term dispositions can be negotiated. Carriers would retain ownership of their equipment. Rents and fees currently remitted to Wymana will be redirected to DHHL effective as a termination date. And DHHL will standardize gates.